Executive session ended at 6:25. Took a five-minute break. We're right now just waiting to make sure video feed is live where we'll actually start the program. I guess in the meantime, we can cover a couple of business issues. Anything, nothing to report out of executive session? Nothing to report out? So we'll just hold off for just a few minutes till we make sure video feeds available.
We're up.
We're up and running. All right. Ah, there's Pastor Dave Dick. Pastor, would you mind leading us in the invocation?
Let's pray together. Father, we come for you tonight, and we just ask that you would place your blessing and your leading upon the city of Canyon Lake. We ask specifically for this evening, for this time, that you would bless the city council, those men and women that have been elected to serve and to lead over this community. We pray that you would bless them, give them discernment and wisdom as they speak with one another, as they answer questions, and as they make decisions that affect the future of this city. And, Lord, we also would lift up those who serve this community in other ways, from our firefighters, to our police officers, to our POA, and many staff that serve this community as well. And we're grateful and thankful for the city, and, Lord, for your blessing upon it, and we ask for your continued leading and blessing, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to ask our ex-mayor, Randy Bonner, to lead us in the flag salute, if you will.
With a privilege, for our flag, pre- flag for America, of great intent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call of the council, please?
Councilmember Aaron Kranz.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Zeitz.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hagerty.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
All present.
I'd like to get approval of the agenda. Are there any items to add to the agenda, having the council member or the city staff?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the agenda as it's written.
Have a motion to second for approval of the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing no opposition, we'll move on. Next item on our agenda is the Chamber of Commerce announcements. Do we have anybody here from the chamber?
Good evening, Mayor Brown, council members and guests. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Allison Barafoto. I'm the executive director at the Canyon Lake Chamber of Commerce. Our president, Jim Randall, is not able to attend this evening. I want to share some things going on at the chamber with you. Last week, we held our first Chamber mixer of 2016. It was hosted at the newest restaurant in Canyon Lake, Cachatoris. It was very well attended. We got to sample their food and see both new and old faces at our mixer. We ask that you join us next Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, February 10th, right here in this room, at 11:30 for our monthly luncheon. Our guest speaker is Riverside County Supervisor Kevin Jeffries. Cost of lunch is $8 and is provided by the Sport Stop and the Cup Above. On Thursday, February 11th, we will be at a combined Chamber mixer with Wildamar, Lake Elsinore, and Menifee, hosted by the Assistance League of Temecula at their Valley Thrift Shop. This is a free event to all Chamber members. They ask that you bring a prize to promote your business. On Friday, March 11th, we will be holding our annual awards gala for our 2016 installation of Chamber officers and presentation of annual awards. It will be held in the Holiday Bay Room at the Canyon Lake Lodge, beginning at 6:00 PM. The cost is $45 per person. We also have table sponsorship packages that are available. Nominations for the community awards are due this Friday. Forms are still available at the Chamber office or at Pack, Wrap &amp; Post. We are also seeking donations for auction items for our silent auction that evening. All donations, big or small, are greatly welcomed and appreciated. All donations of goods or services are tax deductible within legal limits, and I have donation forms available this evening, and you may also get them from Pack, Wrap &amp; Post or the Chamber office. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. We now have a presentation scheduled from the Elsinore Valley Water District regarding the dam operations.
Excuse me?
Mm-hmm.
I'm pretty loud, so you guys probably, can you hear me without the microphone? Thank you for allowing me to come here. My name is Brian Dickinson. I'm the Director of Operations with Elsinore Valley Municipal Water District. And I'm just going to briefly summarize the principles of operating the dam and the valves. The valves are not for flood control purposes. They're for maintenance of the dam and to ensure that the dam integrity stays intact. So normally, we would operate them on a monthly basis, but since we'd been in the drought, we hadn't been operating them except when the Department of Safety of Dams comes out, did inspections with us, and they wanted us to operate them in front of them. So I want to iterate that the valves are strictly for maintenance purposes, and they're not for flood control. The issues in the past, some of the people I know, people get flooded out and have concerns with the causeway, is because the culverts under the causeway are not big enough to handle all the flow when there's heavy rains, and all that rainfall that comes from the whole watershed comes down the San Jacinto River and then backs up over the causeway. So the valves are strictly for maintenance purposes, not for any flood control issues. This, our principles are on the website, so you can go to our website and, under the lake level tab, you can click on there and go through and find the principles on there. So basically, that's what -- Whoa! And we have two 48-inch valves that are in there, and they're about 60 feet below the spillway level of the dam. I'll entertain any questions.
What do you have for flood control?
We don't do anything for flood control.
So the water just goes over the dam?
Yeah. The reservoir itself is a drinking water reservoir, so we don't participate in flood control.
And there's no stress on the dam?
No, we do reports. No, that's all approved by the DSOD. And that's what spillways are designed for, is for that purpose.
Any comments or questions from council, first of all? From the audience, any comments or questions? Thank you for your time. Have a good evening. Now's time for public comments. Will the, somebody read the statement we have to read every time regarding public comments?
Yes. "Any person wishing to address the city council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city, whether or not appears on this agenda, is asked to complete a speaker request form available on the back counter. The completed form is to be submitted to the city clerk prior to an individual being heard by the city council. The city council has adopted a time limitation of three minutes per person. If you are commenting on the agenda item, your comments will be heard at the time that particular item is scheduled on the agenda. Please note that if you are addressing the city council on items not on the agenda, the Brown Act does not allow discussion of such items. Therefore, the city council may only do the following: refer the matter to staff, ask for additional information, or request a report back, or give a very limited factual response." I have one speaker.
Okay.
Nancy Horton?
Thank you, council, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of EVMWD. Just some items that were in the newspaper, but in case you didn't get a chance to read them. Governor Brown has continued our drought emergency until the end of October. We found that out yesterday. There is some discussion that the State Board will consider giving credits to some agencies that have done a great deal of conservation in the past. Up until now, there was no consideration for any conservation that we have done in the past, and our district, as well as others, has done a lot of, spent a lot of time and effort, as well as our citizens, to conserve water. The thought is that somewhere between 4% and 8% will be given as additional credits. So if we're asked to save 28% of water, it would go down perhaps to 24%. We don't know. There's a lot of discussion. A lot of letters are flying back and forth between the agencies, and we think sometime in April, we're going to find out what the decision of the State Board will be regarding whether or not we get more credits. As you know, we've had some rain. We haven't had enough. Everybody's saying, "What's up with El Nino?" We haven't seen it. We think it's coming. We think we're going to get a lot of rain in February, March, and April, and possibly even May. But it certainly isn't going to be enough to repair four years of drought. And so we still are aware that we have a long way to go. The good news is, right now, the snowpack is at about 118% of normal. Last year, it was 5% of normal. That means that we will get some help in the northern part of California. The reservoirs that have been at 25% and 23%, like Oralville and others, are going up, and that's a really good thing. We were told in the beginning by the experts that our rain pattern and water pattern was going to come and hit Southern California mostly and leave Northern California alone. The exact opposite has taken place. But we don't care. We'll take whatever we can get. So we ask you to continue conserving. The district has some wonderful opportunities for you to use conservation gizmos, like aerators for your sink faucets, shower restrictors, all the things that, if you haven't done them, it's a good time. We got a grant recently for 700 water recirculators for your hot water heater. That means that you can put in a recirculator, and the hot water will come almost immediately to you when you're in your shower. A lot of people stand for five, 10 minutes before the cold water turns to hot, and all that water goes down the drain unless you remember to keep a bucket there to save that water. So the recirculators are pretty much all gone. It was opened up on the website, and 500 went in two days. There might be a couple left. But I think because of the popularity of that giveaway, for $175 voucher, you can buy, somewhere on the market, in the low 200s, a recirculator, and that will practically pay for your purchase. So I think the district will probably somehow do that again. We haven't voted on it, so I can't promise, but knowing the popularity of it and knowing how much water it saves, that's going to be something to look for. So watch on the website. I feel quite lonely at our board meetings because very few people from the public ever come. So I'm putting out a call for people to come the second Thursday and the fourth Thursday of every month at 4:00 PM. Come and listen to what we do. We pass a lot of motions to do some new projects. It's very exciting that we're putting a lot of time and effort into water storage projects and projects for groundwater management. So if you have any interest in that, I would feel really good to see some familiar faces on Tuesdays, on the second and the fourth Thursday of the month from four, at 4:00. So hope to see you there. Thank you.
Nancy?
Question?
Yes. Recirculator, it sounds yucky. What is it, what does it actual do?
It's a, it's a little pump that goes on your hot water heater, and you, the hot water heater doesn't, usually, most houses, the water doesn't get to your shower or your taps quickly. And so you leave the tap open, and you're pouring cold water down the drain while you wait for hot water. And so this recirculator allows it, within less than a minute, to come to your shower or your tap.
So am I recirculating the hot water from my shower?
Yeah. It, not from the shower. It recirculates the hot water from the hot water, your hot water tank, to your shower quickly.
Okay.
And so what you could even do, even better than that, which is what we did, we, some of them come with timers. We didn't like the timer that was on our pump, so we, my husband purchased for $4.99 a Christmas tree-like gizmo that makes it go on and off on a timer. We use that with our circulator. So we turn it on a few minutes before we're going to go into the shower. We turn it off after we've showered, and so we get hot water almost instantly, and we are not wasting any water whatsoever. And if you think about it, how much water goes down the drain, there are many, many gallons of water that are totally being wasted if you don't keep a bucket in your shower and let that water flow into a bucket and use it for your outdoor plants. So it's a really good thing for about an investment of $250. If you get a rebate of approximately $175, that's a really good deal.
Just the sound of the idea, recirculator, it sounds like I'm washing with my washwater.
No, you're only recirculating clean water.
Good, good. Thank you.
I'm not talking about gray water here.
It's coupled with a bypass to the cold water.
Recirculates.
Put on the circulator, push the water into cold water, hot water gets to the side.
Okay.
It does it in the tank.
Good to know. Thank you very much. Are there any other, hold on, sorry. Yes?
I was going to ask Nancy.
Oh, we've got to keep this on, I'm sure she'll be willing to come back.
Okay, she can answer from there. I was going to ask you, Nancy, on the rebates, is that on the Water District's website? And do, and they are offering that for sure? The 175?
They had 700 of those in date from a grant.
Right, but if I could purchase one somewhere, then you said there's like a $175 rebate. Where would I find that? On the Water District sites?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to make sure that the television audience is aware of the answer, that was affirmative. Go to EVMWD's website, and that's where the rebate vouchers can be found. Are there any other requests to speak?
I don't have any.
Anybody from the audience want to say something? Okay. Seeing nobody that wants to speak, I guess we'll move on. Moving on to the consent calendar. Isn't there something we're supposed to read about the?
Yes.
Okay, if you won't mind doing the duties.
Sure. "All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters. Status reports are documents covering previous city council action. The items listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member may request that an item be removed for further discussion. Staff recommends approval of all items."
Is there anybody that wishes to pull something from the consent calendar? From the statement, financial statement?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, I would like to do, I'd like to request that the financial statement be pulled for comment separately, too, just so that we can comment on it. And then if there are any questions at that time, we'll address it. So with the exception of item 7.4, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Still move.
Second. Have a motion to second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye. Oh, we've got to do a roll call.
Roll call. Councilmember Aaron Kranz.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Zeitz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hagerty.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Yes.
This, motion carries 5-0.
Now, returning to item 7.4, do you have a question that, I want to make a comment, too, but do you have a question? My comment is that it's so nice to see some black rather than red in our projections for the budget, and I think, I'm sorry?
This is last year's report.
This is, oh, this is.
This is the audit, not the projection.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Red there.
Still got some red there. Move approval, well, except you had, you had a question.
On the expense and program revenues governmental activities, on the public works, shouldn't that be the same? I'm wondering why it's not the same. Maybe I just don't understand.
Which page?
It's on page 45.
Shouldn't that be the same? I'm not following what the question is.
Okay, on public works, it shows expenses and revenues, and the public works expenses are higher than the revenues. I was just wondering why.
Most of the city functions are covered by property taxes and sales taxes that aren't a function. This is the only, only a portion of these expenses are program revenues. So usually, the program revenues don't cover the cost of the expenses, and they're offset with general revenues like property taxes, sales tax, and that. So most of the departments operate, if you turn to page, page number 50. So you can see the city's total expenses in that first column are 4.85 million, and we have charges for services, 262,000, grants and contributions of 758,000. So almost every one of our activities operate at a negative. You can see that far right column, and then they're offset with, with the general revenues, which is property taxes, utility users' tax, trans occupancy taxes, so. Most cities, you know, you don't cover all of your costs that way. It's, that's what the property taxes and those are for, so.
And the second question, we had a negative balance. Does that come out of reserves?
Yes. Comes out of fund balance.
300,000?
Yes.
Okay. Do you anticipate that decreasing next year?
This current year we're in would be next year, and that's a further agenda item as we do, so.
I jumped ahead. You'll, you'll get a nice answer a little later on. Any other discussion on this item before we move forward for the vote?
I move approval. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of 7.4, the fiscal year 2014, 2015, annual financial report.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. This is a roll call item.
We can do all in favor.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition, it sounds like the major passed. Moving on. Okay, now we've got schedule of future events. Is there any, anything on there that needs to be modified or added, revised? Don't see here any, any comments, so I'll assume that the.
Do, do we have to add a special meeting?
Oh, you mean Friday.
If we need to have a special meeting?
No, we'll sort it at the end of the agenda.
Okay.
All right. Moving on, no comments on the future events calendar. Let's move on to our public hearing. Public hearing to approve resolution number 2016-05, variance number 15-82, to widen existing driveway to a vacant lot located at 28910 Vacation Drive, Canyon Lake. I open this public hearing at 6:55. Do I have a staff presentation?
Yes, I'm right up here.
You're up here.
Okay, oh, there you are.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. I'm here to present variance number 15-82. It is to allow cuts and fills of 1.1 and 2.1 to accommodate the widening of an existing driveway from 15 feet to 20 feet, located at 28910 Vacation Drive. This is a photograph of the site. This is the driveway leading into the property. This is a photograph leading up to the driveway. This is an existing driveway. It's right above the residence. It's located along Vacation. This photograph is about halfway up the driveway. This photograph is looking at the existing graded pad at the top, looking towards the This is another photograph from the existing graded pad. This is looking to the north. And then another existing photograph of the graded pad looking to the neighboring property. So quick background on the project. On June 5, 1968, the county of Riverside issued a grading permit for Track 3718 to do a lot of grading towards a lot of properties along that tract for the development of single-family residences. On March 8, 2000, building permits were issued for 29035 Yosemite Place, which is the neighbor to this site, for a new single family. On March 3, 2009, Ordnance 112, which is also known as the hillside ordinance, was adopted by Canyon Lake. The intent of the hillside ordinance was to add and protect existing hillsides and ridgelines along Canyon Lake. The applicant proposed to widen their existing driveway from 15 feet to 20 feet to meet fire code requirements, and this is for access for emergency vehicles, such as a fire department truck. The gradings will also be from 1:1 to 2:1 ratios. The red indicates the two, the 1:1 slope analysis, which is approximately 50%. The blue would be the widening of the existing driveway. The site is approximately 5.83 acres, with 36% to 50% average slopes at the top of the, of the pad. They are proposing to cut 2,977 cubic yards and fill 2,005 cubic yards to widen this driveway, and to stabilize that existing driveway as well. In order to adopt a variance, there must be certain findings that must be, that must be made. For instance, one of the findings is special circumstances exist on the site, which deprive the property from developing a single family as allowed. The site was legally graded. Grading will occur for the existing of the driveway and its compliance with Section 9.15.60, which would deprive the owners from developing the single family. The second finding, the proposed grading is consistent with the purpose and intent of Ordnance 112, to preserve and minimize impacts to the hillside and ridgeline. The site is physically suitable for the design and development, which will result in minimum disturbance of sensitive areas. Codes and laws have changed. The actual ridgeline is not going to be touched. It's only going to be the existing driveway leading up to the graded pad. Grading proposes, excuse me. The grading proposed in connection with the development will not result in soil erosion, slitting of lower slopes, flooding, severe scarring, or any geological instability or fire hazards which would affect health, safety, and general welfare as determined by a city engineer. by a city engineer. Engineering and building departments will review this prior to issuance of any building permits. The proposed grading was designed to minimize disruption to hillsides and ridgeline areas and retains the natural character and visual quality of the site and aesthetics qualities of the area. The only portion that's going to be affected is the existing driveway from fifteen feet to twenty feet. The top of the ridgeline will not be touched at all. The final finding is that the proposed development is in conformance with qualitative development standards and guidelines as established in section nine point five and is in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies in the, of the general plan. It, it does comply with the housing element goal, number one, adequate housing opportunities regardless of age, sex, economic situation, origin, religious, family size, marital status, or disabilities, or other factors. Also complies with housing element goal number two, foster housing opportunities to serve all segments of the community to enhance the quality of life. Also complies with land use goal, number one, provide an adequate inventory of designated land uses to contain the future build out population of the community consistent with the community character. And it's also consistent with land use strategy number seven, to protect and preserve neighborhoods while providing enhanced opportunities for housing to meet changing population characteristics. This project is exempt from SEQA section one five three oh one, which class one considered of repair maintenance permitting or minor alterations to topographical features. And section one five three zero four C, filling of earth into previously excavated land with material compatible with natural features of the site. Staff recommend city council approve resolution twenty sixteen dash zero five and approve variance fifteen dash eighty-two. And I'm available for questions or comments.
Are there comments or questions from the council? Okay, now, it's a little bit more formal when we go into one of these kind of things. I believe the next thing we need to talk about is are there any, has anybody, any of the proponents requested to testify on this matter?
Yes, Paul and Jennifer Helbach.
No, I just, I just wanted to let you know, thank you for your time and consideration of this matter, and let you know I was here to answer questions if there was any. Yes, I'm the owner of the property. My wife and I, Jennifer and Paul Helbach. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other people, proponents?
No.
Are there any opponents who wish to testify?
No.
No opponents, therefore I don't think we have any rebuttals to opponents. With that being said, no questions. To city staff. Hearing done. I'm going to call, this hearing closed at seven oh five. Any additional discussion by the council on this matter?
If I may.
Yes.
Now it's on. I just would like to comment that this has kind of been a long time coming, and it certainly is a pleasure to see it finally come to its conclusion. I'm sure the Helbachs are very happy, and I know that the city is equally as happy to have this done, so. From what I'm reading here, it's just a formality now to get the, the rest of the paperwork done, so congratulations to both of you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Just a comment, sir. And, and congratulations that you've gotten this far. As, as council member Erin Krantz has said, this has probably been nine years in the planning stage. And, and just a, a quick history thing that did you know, and, but for the, for the general public, that land was graded many years ago, as I understand it, in nineteen seventy-four, that, that hilltop was taken down and graded to that, that position. And for the community, that, all that dirt and rock went in to make the northern causeway. That prior to that, you had to go outside the community to get to the north area. And all of that dirt from your pad and the one next door was used for that purpose. And so, a great use of, of land and, and everything. And, and Jennifer and Paul, I wish you well and, and build fast and, and do a good job.
Other comments or questions from the council? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number two zero one six dash zero five?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Two seconds.
You can pick. I have a motion and second to approve resolution number two zeros, two zero one six dash zero five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposition. Motion carries. And I guess you're supposed to give us the official vote results.
Five, zero.
Okay, we're official now. With that, the hearing's closed and that issue's behind us. Moving on to business items. The next item on the agenda is the analysis of established, excuse me, analysis of established convenience fees for credit card payment at City Hall. Staff have a report on this item?
Good evening. This item is a six-month follow-up to the implementation of allowing credit cards for payment at City Hall. Staff began accepting credit card payments in mid-July two thousand fifteen. Through December thirty-first two thousand fifteen, the city collected just over twenty-three thousand dollars in credit card payments. At the time of the usage of credit cards was being discussed, staff and council established a flat three-dollar convenience fee for each transaction, regardless of the amount of the transaction. A maximum transaction amount of fifteen hundred dollars was also established. The credit card transaction company charges a fee of two point seven five percent of the total transaction amount. For two thousand fifteen, this transaction fee totaled six hundred and thirty-three dollars. Staff collected three dollars per transaction, which totaled two hundred and seventy dollars. This resulted in a deficit of over three hundred dollars in fees charged to the city that were not recovered by the three-dollar convenience fee. Staff has analyzed the transactions and have found that the biggest discrepancy between the amount charged by the credit card transaction company and the city's three-dollar convenience fee were for transactions over three hundred dollars. Since the city has charged a percentage of each total transaction, the larger amount of the transaction, the more the city is charged. Staff is presenting the following options for council to consider. Option one is to stop accepting credit card payments at City Hall. This would eliminate the city incurring any transaction charges, but may create an inconvenience for customers. Option two is to keep everything operating as is. This option would still allow customers to utilize credit cards for payments, but the city would not recover the full amount of the transaction fee charged by the transaction company. Option three is to continue allow customers to pay by credit card, but cap the maximum amount of the transaction at three hundred dollars instead of fifteen hundred dollars. Staff also proposes establishing a convenience fee tier structure. For transaction amounts below one hundred dollars, the convenience fee would remain at three dollars. For transactions amounts between one hundred and three hundred dollars, the convenience fee would be six dollars. Staff estimates that this option would have minimal, if any, fiscal impact. And I'd be happy to enter questions you might have.
Go ahead.
What, what would the higher level charges be? Do, is it often that a customer would charge over fifteen hundred dollars on the credit card?
Right now, they can't charge over fifteen hundred dollars. But we've estimated, we've looked at all the transactions in that six-month period, and most of the transactions are between forty-one dollars for our business renewals and three hundred dollars. There were very few transactions that went over the three hundred dollars, but those few transactions, we had one that got at fifteen hundred dollars, and you're looking at a forty-dollar service charge for that. So when we were only charging three dollars, that's where our biggest discrepancy was. But mo, the majority, I would say about eighty-five percent of them, were between, you know, a dollar and three hundred dollars.
Is there any way we could allow customers to charge the fifteen hundred and just add on the cost, city cost to that? Is there any way of, of knowing what that charge would be and just adding that on so that they have the convenience of being able to charge the fifteen hundred?
I'll defer that to the city manager.
I think I can answer that. When we first started looking at this, we found that you are not allowed to pass the two point seven five percent on to the customer. You have to set a convenience charge. Because it's not a pass-through of the two point seven five, it's the convenience for it.
So it has to be a fixed amount?
Correct.
And you cannot?
Correct. And we really, we had so few, I think we probably had two that were over three, four hundred dollars. A majority of them are business licenses, some of the smaller permits that homeowners are getting. When you start getting into the larger fees, they're really developers that are coming with checks anyways.
Oh, okay. All right.
So has this met with approval with the public? Do they find it's more convenient than what they did before?
I believe so. We have a lot of the people who come in for their business license renewals, or when they're at the counter getting a permit and they need to add on a business license. It's convenient for them to be able to just use a card.
My opinion is not to change it. If we've established something that the residents are like or enjoy doing for the two or three hundred dollars a year that it may cost us, it might project a positive image for a change. So you know me, I like to spend money.
My, my, my opinion would be that we adopt option three. I don't think everybody in the city should be responsible to pay, which basically they're doing, for a charge that is in excess of, you know, that they're getting a little bit of a free ride. I just think it should be fair and equal for everyone. And if it's over a hundred dollars, I think we should charge, we should be able to recover our, our city costs.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with the option three that Council Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty has talked about. People use credit cards, I think, for various reasons. Lack of cash, people don't have cash, or checks, and that kind of stuff. And some people like to use it to get their airline mileage and, and other stuff. And so the more they charge, the, the further they can fly. What we're doing here, I think, complies with Councilman Erin Krantz's thing of continuing to satisfy the people. And it's still the three-dollar charge from zero to one hundred dollars, and only six dollars from one hundred to three hundred dollars. That additional three hundred dollars for the hundred to three hundred, I think, is proportionately good. And I, I would go along with Dawn and recommend that staff go forward with option three.
I will state that I would prefer option two, I think, with, in agreement with Councilman Erin Krantz. So I just like the idea of not increasing fees, even though it's probably justified here. You know, it's, fees are yucky. So I guess that leaves it to you, if you've got a comment or a thought?
Well, I. I'm, I'm all for being a good guy, and it doesn't happen very often, you said, right? That we don't, that we go over?
No, it looks like if we went a full year, if we continued at the same rate of collection that we did for the six months that we looked at, we'd be losing about a thousand dollars for the entire year.
Thousand dollars. Yeah, yeah, I'm afraid I don't like fees myself, but in this case, it's the cost of doing business. They can write it off. They have to pay it. So it's not going to be something that's going to hurt them in the end, I don't think.
Any additional discussion on this issue?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Okay, do I have a, did I have a motion on anything at this point? I don't remember hearing a motion.
I scare myself. I move that we adopt option three of the analysis of established convenience fee for credit card payment.
Do I hear a second?
I think this is good direction to staff to bring back that option three as a.
Correct. If option three were approved by the city council, we would bring back another resolution that would cap the maximum amount of credit card payment we would, we would accept as three hundred dollars. And it would charge a three-dollar convenience fee, which is what is currently charged for any transaction under one hundred dollars. And it would increase the convenience fee to six dollars for any transactions between one hundred dollar, one cent, and three hundred dollars.
So the motion is to have staff bring back something for us to approve? Is that what?
No, it's to approve option three.
To it is approve it.
No, this is to direct staff to come back with option three. We would have to draft a resolution that would be approved by the council at a future meeting date to change those convenience fees.
Okay, so you want me to amend my motion rather than recommending the council approve option three, that, that the counts, request that you bring back?
Option three, yes.
So, so moved.
Do I hear a second? Moved and seconded to, uh, do that.
To bring back a resolution that would make the maximum amount acceptable by credit card three hundred dollars, and to have a three-dollar convenience fee for transactions under one hundred dollars, and a six-dollar convenience fee for transactions between one hundred dollar, one cent, and three hundred dollars.
Glad you had to repeat that rather than me. Is there going to be further discussion on this issue? Since it's not enacting an ordinance, I think we can just do ayes and nays.
You can, it may be easier if there's people who want different options to do a roll call for this one.
All right. Okay, so our roll call is which option do we prefer? Is that what we're?
This motion is for option three to come back.
Okay. Okay, I, I'll make one.
If that gets three votes, then we don't talk about one and two, though.
Correct. So then staff would bring back the resolution to amend it to option three.
I think it's pretty clear, so I'm going to, even though I might object a little bit. Okay, give us a roll call.
Councilmember Erin Krantz.
No.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Councilmember Zeit.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty.
Yes.
And Mayor Brown.
Well, I'm flip-flopping here. I'll say aye.
Okay, this is approved for one.
Okay. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. If I can figure out which one that is.
Item eleven-two.
Eleven-two, okay. Introduction and first reading ordinance number one six six. Amending various sections of Title X of the City of Canyon Lake Municipal Code regarding the hearing and appeal process for citations involving keeping and control of dogs and cats. Can I have a staff report, please?
Sure. Mayor Brown had requested that staff look into some discrepancies in our municipal code regarding animal control-related issues. Title X of the municipal code was also on the list of administrative updates that staff had created for the strategic planning session. So the amendments that are proposed to that section are adding a hearing officer defined as a neutral third party designated by the city manager. Previously, in the, that portion of the municipal code, it had appeals coming directly to the city council after the animal control officers. And that is what we have been currently doing. We did have one appeal that we had a neutral third party look into for a barking dog. It also adds leash to the definitions and clearly defines the leash definition to coincide with state law, which currently prohibits leashes from being longer than six feet. It changes the appeals process for citations, again, to being with a hearing officer instead of city council. It removes the city appeal process for hearings on animal cruelty seizures and potentially dangerous animals, moving any appeals on the hearing officer's decision, decision to an appellate court. It broadens the city's options to collect on abatement costs for, to any manner allowed by law. And it changes the consequences of having a designation as a vicious animal. And it changes the consequences of having a designation as a vicious animal, removing the requirement that the animal have its ear or inner thigh tattooed and replaces that with requiring that signs be posted on the property cautioning people of the vicious animal and the animal wears a colored tag at all times. All vicious animals are currently required to be restrained and muzzled when off of the owner's enclosed property and that requirement has remained. In addition, a couple of amendments that were not in the redlined ordinance that was included in the agenda packet is adding a definition of leash law to mean the provisions of state law regarding dog leashes, including exemptions for dog parks. And under section ten sixteen zero one zero restraint, it changes that language to read except as otherwise allowed by the leash law or other state laws, all dogs shall be kept under restraint when off the owner's premises, et cetera. This is to accommodate dog parks because that's not on somebody's private property, but it is an enclosed area where dogs can be let off leash. So with those items being reviewed, staff's going to recommend that the city council accept those amendments, introduce and hold first reading of the ordinance, and then we will bring this back with the revisions for second reading and adoption at the next meeting. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question. This hearing officer, I'm presuming that's a volunteer. We aren't hiring somebody for this job.
Yes, we actually used a special enforcement officer who had law enforcement experience in conducting those types of hearings and appeals.
Good, okay.
I'd like to, it's probably not a question, more of a comment, but I think it's more, I'll throw it out there anyway. You know, this is important that we do this to make sure that the dog park is going to be able to have dogs running around without being on leashes. So there's a lot of words here and a lot of importance, but that should be as important to any, you know, to the, making sure that people who have dogs running loose at the park are not fined by anybody for not have, not having the animals be leashed.
Yeah, we need to do this.
Well, comments, questions?
I have a couple of comments, I guess. I understand that part of it and I'm totally in agreement with that. I find it, I find it difficult, though, in the definition of leash and then sixteen, ten sixteen zero one zero, a comment on that, that that part seems to be impossible. But the definition we're putting in for leash on page one nineteen means a leash or other device of a size and material appropriate to the size and temperament of the dog within the length of the leash, as allowed by state law, which presently allows no longer a leash than six feet, as that may be amended from time to time. And I think, to me, that's, I'm not a grammarian, I barely can speak English, I can't write it, I don't know what that means, and I know that there's several people on my, my street living in a cul-de-sac that have leashes that extend out and I would hate to think that these people walking their dogs are with a little bit longer than six feet are going to be subject to, could be subject to a fine.
In state law for rabies control, state law requires that dogs be restrained in no longer than a six feet leash. So even according to state law, whether or not within our municipal code, they could be cited if they had one of those retractable leashes that was ten feet long.
I think the reason they made it six feet and negated the longer leashes that come out forever, if they put one of those on a little dog, it's fine, but if they put it on a big dog that happens to be a little, have a little snit now and then, it can be very terrifying to someone walking by who thinks they're allowing enough time, space to get around that dog. And all of a sudden, the leash extends and there they are with this dog in their face. So I think they are trying to be consistent so that people walking and passing dogs will know that, you know, what safe distance they have and also just restricting the animal to a little less space.
To me, you're establishing a law in length when it's the person walking the dog that's, needs to be the person that's, that has the law written for. But we get on page one twenty, at the bottom of the page in the ten sixteen zero one zero. All dogs shall be kept under restraint when off the owner's premises by a leash or other device immaterial appropriate to the dog. So we're talking about the leash again. Held by a person capable of restraining such dog with that leash, restraint does not include voice, eye, or signal control. And I would question with a big dog, men, women, whatever, can restrain the dog at a given point in time? They can do that, you know, things happen with, with dogs and things like that. On my street, there's a Great Dane that's walked by a high school person. I think if that Great Dane got, got upset about something, that person couldn't control it. So, you know, we shouldn't let people do things like that and, you know, I don't know that I can control it. Fortunately, I weigh a little bit more than that dog, but only by a little bit, but...
A lot, John.
It's a big dog. But that, it just seems to be, this is kind of a strict liability situation that you, you have a dog which, which is a docile domesticated animal and, and things happen. And I just, it just worries me that those, those two things are in there. But I understand the other part and like that.
Yeah, let me share, I share your concerns and in my ideal world, this issue would be left to, at the local level. But what's happened is the state has usurped our ability to control these things and it's now part of the state law, you know, I won't go into the history of how that happened, but our legislators decided we're too stupid to enact our own good, you know, common sense legislation, so they took it away from us. And I share all your concerns, but maybe that needs, means we need to change the legislature up in Sacramento and let them return these local issues to localities where they belong.
I will, I will agree to this, but I want you to know I don't like it.
Well, I don't like it either, John. I don't like it either.
Okay.
I have a few comments, mostly there, I have some, I think that sentence, the L, per N, leash, a little clumsy, which presently allows no longer a leash than six feet, allows a leash to be no longer than six feet, there another way that it could be, yeah, it's just a little clumsy there.
Yeah, we can change that.
Also, under ten sixteen zero one zero, if we're going to require six feet, then the six feet leash should be added to that. Owner's premises by a six foot leash? If we're going to require that elsewhere?
Did we want to leave it with the definition of leash? If we put six foot in this section?
Oh, and then it changes?
If the state allows it to be eight feet, then we would have to come back and do another ordinance.
Then as we define, just capitalize leash, please, so that it shows that it's a designated definition?
Mm-hmm.
Per N D, under ten twenty-eight zero three zero, I see that we removed that the hearing officer, excuse me, shall not be the animal control officer, but may be the city manager, et cetera. Is there a reason that was removed or has it been put elsewhere or how do we, how, is it, did I miss it, that it says how it will be designated, how we designate a hearing?
The hearing officer cannot be the city manager. The hearing officer has to be a neutral under state law designated by, in this case, the city manager.
Oh, okay. It says that it is, it means, okay, all right, that's fine. Another little nagging change, ten thirty-six zero four zero. Last sentence reads and order to the owner of the animal dog or cat. Do we want to leave it at just animal or just dog or cat or animal comma dog or cat?
Rabbit.
Could be a rabbit, could be a vicious rabbit, I've seen them. I mean, they bite.
They do bite.
They do bite. I'm not kidding.
My daughter's chinchilla growls at me when I walk by.
See, well then, well then, we can't put them all in here.
It should be a cat. Dogs and cats.
We can take out animal.
Okay, I just, one or the other. Under ten forty zero six zero, it says a potentially dangerous animal while on the owner's property shall at all times be kept indoors or in a securely fenced locked yard from which the animal cannot escape and which children cannot enter. I mean, I'm not a children, but I worry about getting, you know, if there's a vicious dog on the premises.
The animal would still be required to be in its own yard with a notice at any entrance to it stating that there is a vicious animal on the property and it would have to have, I've seen, and they have large brightly colored tags that go on the collar, but this way you won't prevent, you know, an adult family from having their dog that's been deemed vicious in their yard.
But is this a childproof lock that's going to be required on this? Is that what we're trying to say?
They would have to, same way that you have pools where the gate shuts and a child can't reach it.
That's what I wanted to be sure of. That's it, that's all my nagging little changes.
Clarification. Just a, just a quick clarification. You said, who would enforce this?
The vicious animal portion?
The whole, this whole code, ordinance?
Animal control or code enforcement would?
So code enforcement would issue a citation and then being the hearing officer?
No. No. It has to be a neutral third party that's designated by the city manager. So if special enforcement had issued some citation or an animal control officer had issued some citation, the city manager would have to go get another party that's not related to it.
But I thought you said the...
We had used a special enforcement officer for a, for a barking dog issue that had gone through animal control. But we could find a volunteer judge or volunteer animal control officer that's not from our jurisdiction.
So the animal control officer could do it as long as he wasn't prejudiced by giving the citation?
Or wasn't from that agency.
Different agents, two different agencies. Animal control is a contractor.
No, 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 I'm talking about our code enforcement.
If our code enforcement cites, they cannot hear this, a different neutral person. If, if animal friends cites under the contract, then our code enforcement officer can hear.
That's what I thought I asked, if our code enforcement cites it, then it would be precluded from hearing it. So then somebody else would have to do that.
Correct.
You have to find somebody else. Okay. Who, any other, you just go to somebody and I guess the question was, you know, who's, it's not going to be you, it can't be you, it's going to be somebody else and that, and it's just somebody that you designate?
In the past, in the past, we have used fire personnel. For example, a person who routinely does enforcement, we've used retired people in the community and we've used people from other cities.
So it'll vary?
It varies.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from the council? I'd like to make one other comment. You know, there's been quite a few top, people talking about animal control this last month. And at some point in the future, I think we're going to clearly define what the penalties, what the expected penalties are. We're not doing that in this ordinance.
Yes, there'll be a policy and procedure that's given for when our warning citations provided versus when our fines provided, how they will do canvassing, et cetera, and that will come to the city council at a later date.
Yeah, so I, at this point in time, if I may, just in my discussions on all of this, animal control has noted that their practice or is to give a warning, fifteen days to get to license, that type of thing. And in the future, I anticipate that we will come back and note that as part of our policy regarding what we expect animal control to do, that they do give out warnings before they issue citations, is that a fair?
Correct, that, that will be in the policy that's brought back for approval.
Okay. And then finally, we did, there were some other concerns regarding what, what animal control was doing and we just made, Ariel's going to send a letter to them just, you know, reciting what's in our contract, that they adhere to the provisions of our contract and don't exceed the authority that we have granted them. Is that fair?
Yep, that, that was set.
Okay. With that said, I have no additional comments. Are there any other comments or questions from the council? Any public comments or questions on this issue? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion to approve ordinance, first reading, is this first reading, correct?
Correct.
First reading of ordinance number one-six-six?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number one-six-six. No financial impact, so we can go ahead and yes or no it. All who's in favor, say aye. Aye. Was opposed? I hear some concern from our...
It's an ordinance, you need a roll call vote.
Oh, we do? Okay.
Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeitz?
I don't like it, but yes.
Mayor Protem Hagerty?
Yes.
Mayor Brown?
Yes, with the proviso that, you know, I wish we had the control that we should have over this thing and it didn't rest with the state and vote for legislators who return control of city government to the cities.
Motion carries five-zero.
Moving on to consideration of fiscal year two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, mid-year budget review and projections and proposed budget adjustments. Is there a staff presentation?
Your Honorable Mayor, members of city council, city staff, excuse me. I took a look where we were at through December and then I projected the revenues and expenditures, excuse me, through June. And we originally budgeted back in July, revenues of about four point three million and expenditures of about four point six, about four hundred, four million, six hundred sixty-one thousand for original deficit of about three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. At the mid-year, the general fund revenues are up and we're predicting to be about four point five million, which is the largest increases in the utility users' tax, because this is the, really the first year we had in the history. So we kind of used the original study and then we're coming in higher than that. And so we predict the revenues will be up. And then also for expenditures, we're predicting year-to-date general fund expenditures of about four million eighty-five, which is about five hundred and seventy-six thousand less than originally budgeted. The largest decrease is in public safety fire. And you can see here with the, the first quarter of the year, we have a new contract with the fire department and that's three quarters of that cost. And then we also are, we hired a new employee and then there's a little bit in there for a future employee, some benefits, and then the mutual aid charges year-to-date were fifty-eight hundred dollars and then we put some money in there for a fire consultant. So for net change to the fire department, the new one would be about three hundred eighty-two thousand less than the original budget. And so the city attorney costs are a little higher, there was some carryover litigation costs. And so with those two items, the attorneys and then fire decrease, we're looking at about four million. I can't see this, this is so small. General fund budget expenditures about four million three oh one. And with these two changes, we're predicting going from a budgeted deficit of three hundred twenty-seven thousand to a budgeted surplus of about a hundred and ninety-six thousand, which would be the, about the first time in about six or seven years. So it is good news. Any questions on any of the revenues or expenditures to date? And in your, your packet, you have the detail by, by account. And so if you have any questions on any of the detail revenues or expenditures or where they're at and or how they work, they also have a, a list of budget adjustments, number one there, and we're asking you to, to approve those budget adjustments. there, and we're asking you to approve those budget adjustments for the year.
Just note that we did review this in the finance committee Tuesday, so. Any questions from the council? Comments? Questions from the audience? Speaker requests? Anybody want to say anything? I'm sorry? Yeah, I welcome some applause for balanced budgets. All those in favor of balanced budgets, say aye.
Something new.
I guess that's it. Just to, we need to prove, oh, for the amendment, yes. Is there a motion to approve the amended budget?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve amended budget. Financial issue? Guess you got to do it by name, huh?
Councilmember Erin Crans?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Councilmember Zeitz?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hagerty?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes.
Motion approved, five zero.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is our discussion of drones. Did you get, I asked the city manager to get us copies of the federal regulations regarding drones so we can have that for reference.
I apologize. I have one copy of them. I do not have copies for everybody. You want to run that?
Well, I think we could read it. Might be faster than trying to make copies. I mean, it's just bullet list, maybe highlighted.
Yeah, sure. Go for it.
That might help.
You want to read it so you can understand it or you want to read it quick?
Quick, quick.
These are the new...
I try to interpret the lawyer.
These are the new FAA regulations that require registration for recreational drones. These were announced on December fourteenth and basically have requirements for registration by February nineteenth of two thousand and sixteen. They apply to owners of any drone or unmanned aircraft system. The acronym is UAS. Purchased after December twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen has to be registered. There is a website for registration. There are registration fees. Their fees are waived in the first thirty days. In addition, drones have to display a unique identifier, registration number, which will be issued by the FAA. Registrants need to provide certain information, including their name, home address, and email address. Upon completion of the registration process, the web application will generate a certificate of aircraft registration slash proof of ownership that will include a unique registration number and that goes on the aircraft. The regulations, this is now, this is the league's editorializing, "May not go far enough to adequately address the hazards and potential for misuse that drones represent. Registration is largely voluntary and it is not required at the purchase or point of sale." The league indicates that while registration is required prior to the operation of the drone in the national airspace, it is absent to see how that will be required, absent of being enforced, absent a point-of-sale registration requirement. There is no requirement that drone operators provide the serial number of their drone. Sorry, I know you're waiting for this. This raises doubts about the effectiveness. FAA enforcement, the Unmanned Aircraft System Registration Task Force, has made a series of recommendations leading to the new FAA regulations and consider the difficulties posed by enforcement under the limitations of both FAA and local law. The FAA's primary enforcement mechanism will be outreach and education. It will be largely web-based. They may also employ administrative action or legal enforcement action to gain compliance with the new requirement. Existing law already provides civil penalties of up to twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for failure to register with corresponding criminal penalties, including fines up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars under a specific U.S. Code section and imprisonment up to three years under another code section. However, under the new regulations, there is no systematic mechanism to alert authorities as to who has and has not registered. The Consumer Technology Association estimates that four thousand drones were sold during the holiday season. They indicate there's many safety hazards and lack of comprehensive registration. This goes on to cite drone incidents and says, "The problem required is that drone operators are ignorant of the applicable rules. In an effort to help the public understand what is required of not only recreational drone operators, but also commercial and public agency users of unmanned aircraft systems, the FAA has launched a website containing information on the federal requirements, including safety guidelines." In addition, I would add that a group of fire chiefs and police chiefs sponsored a piece of legislation which would have regulated drones over fire and police areas. Legislation was passed by, the legislature vetoed by the governor. There is no, without a veto message.
Vetoes by the governor.
Would you like to, since this is my issue, do you want to make a statement or do you want me to just jump in?
No, there is information on the FAA website. It's called Know Before You Fly and it goes over the requirements for recreational drone users, commercial or public drone users, if they're using it for a commercial reason. They have a separate registration system and separate regulations that they have to follow. On the Know Before You Fly website, there is, and that's also attached in the agenda, the model aircraft operations from the FAA. It's their guidelines on how to operate, but those are not requirements. They're just guidelines that they give to recreational users.
If, without objections, and since this is kind of my issue and I've been studying it, without objection, would you mind if I throw in a little commentary at this point?
Can we restrict it to twenty minutes?
Can you give me five rather than three? First of all, the, what we're talking about is recreational drones, anywhere in size from, I believe it's five and a half ounces to fifty pounds. Now, fifty pounds in a drone, that's a, you know, equivalent of a car battery, you know, at terminal velocity, falling from four hundred feet. I'm not going to give you the exact, but it's close to, you know, a car battery hitting you at three hundred miles an hour. You know, if one of those things falls from the sky and hits somebody, they're squished. Yeah. There's certainly an issue there on a potential hazard. Now, even, you know, the recreational, you know, five and a half ounces, who knows? But certainly the, you know, there's a potential safety issue with the big ones. I don't know what the answer to this is, but I think it's worthy of discussion. As I mentioned earlier, that why I wanted this on the table for discussion is we will probably have multiple drones flying in the sky during the Fiesta Day parade. And if two of those things collide, you know, I don't know if you're talking about a fifty-pound drone, but you're talking about significant weight falling out of the sky. And I, for one, don't want to leave this out dangling without some discussion and thought because there's a potential for serious injury. Now, I know there are other issues involved, privacy issues versus recreational. I mean, the list goes on and on. There's an issue of whether you can put firearms on drones. That's not even codified. Right now, as far as I'm aware, unless there's some interpretation, no case law that I'm aware of anyway, where there's, where that's even been challenged or issued or does it, you have to have a concealed weapons permit if you have a gun on your drone. You know, this whole issue is the wild, wild west. And as far as I'm concerned, we can either discuss it or ignore it and risk the, and risk an accident happening, knowing we might have been able to do something, but we didn't. I frankly don't know what the answer is. I, you know, I don't want to discourage people from recreational use and some of those little videos are cool, but at the same time, I think this at least deserves some discussion. What we want to do about it, two seems to be left open. There's at least one city I know of locally that has a complete ban on the things. I'm not sure. We want to go there. I probably wouldn't want to go there. But at least they've done something and have talked about it and I think we need to begin that discussion. Whether it results in a consensus on where to go from here or not, I don't know if it can or it should, but I'd at least like to have everybody weigh in on what they think about the situation and where it needs to go from here. With that said, I think I'll see if anybody else wants to say anything. Go ahead, Jordan.
Well, I'm concerned that there's no registration at point of sale. There's no training involved if you purchase one of these. It's not like buying a boat where you have safety inspections or what have you. How would you even enforce anything that you, that you put in place? Most of them are recreational and there have been a few that have collided in the past, but I don't know. What's the penalty? What do you, how are you going to tell somebody they can't fly it? Where are they going to learn how to fly it?
That's part of the problem is a lot of them don't learn how to fly it before they go out there. One of the, I was just anecdotal today, talking to one guy who said he was watching his neighbor fly a drone. All of a sudden it left range and the thing just took off and had no control over it whatsoever. Didn't know that he had to worry about range issues. They didn't even give him basic instruction on how to fly the thing. You know, big safety issue.
Well, there's no question that they can be dangerous if they're not used properly. And the professionals that use them for photographing or whatever it is, I'm sure they must have some type of instruction how to use them.
There's a difference between commercial, first of all, and recreational.
Of course.
But, you know, my personal opinion and only my opinion, only off the top of my head, is if some, if somebody wants to fly one of these things, if they were to just get a permit, "I'm going to fly this thing in this day in this area," and then we see a drone out flying and there's no permit request on file, then, you know, we know that the person is not adhering to the law, give them a sort of slap on the hand, tell them, "We got to make sure these things don't crash into each other." You know, maybe that's not adequate. You know, I mean, there's a lot of privacy issues that whole thing ignores. But again, I just think there are so many issues that we need to just continue discussion. I'll leave it at that, Jordan.
Well, I know that Ed Vector, and I can check with him, you know, they use them occasionally because they check on backyard pools and what have you to make sure that there isn't any contamination. But I'm sure that they're properly instructed on how to use those.
Perhaps we could, for the Fiesta Days and for, you know, large crowds where the car show, where there might be a drone, the fireworks, we've had drones that have published pictures on Facebook and so forth. Perhaps for functions such as that, which would be, well, their home association functions, but their city function, perhaps we could require a permit, a non-fee permit, something. So at least we could keep track. If there's four or five of them, you know, in a large crowded area, there would be a chance for collision. So perhaps if we get, you know, more than a couple, we would be a little concerned and advise them to be careful or something. I'm just thinking that for the larger crowds, perhaps some kind of a permit might be required. As far as somebody that's like model airplanes, you know, where they, the remote controlled ones where they just go down to the beach or they go to the park with their young son and they do it. People aren't going to go get a permit every time they want to do that. They might not even know they're going to do it until ten minutes before they decide to go. So I think asking for a permit every time you use one is just not feasible. But perhaps there could be some restrictions about where they're flown. They have to be in an open area, you know, park or the baseball field or something. I don't know. I know that I had a person complain to me that liked to sunbathe in her backyard without her top on. She had a drone that came over all the time and visited her and so she was very unhappy about it and wanted to know what could be done. So there are some privacy issues too. So I'm not sure what the answer is. I just came from a RCTC Transportation Committee and some of the things that I'm hearing about for the future, it's like the Jetsons. It's almost scary and it's coming faster than we can apply rules for it. So, like this, I think in the beginning, they should have said that, you know, that when you buy it, there are certain things that you have to do. You have to take a short class or, I don't know, there should be requirements for that just like any other thing that could be a safety hazard. But unfortunately, it popped up and here we are with it.
Any other?
This is really hard for me because I don't like Big Brother. I don't like having to register toys. I don't like having to have somebody else have one more way of tracking something I'm doing. I do understand the safety concerns. I think they're valid. What bothers me about an ordinance is just like there are no FAA rules on this, there are no laws, there are guidelines. Having them enforced is nearly impossible. So let's say we do have something, if Fiesta Days, a drone goes down. Unless that drone is marked, unless we've required registration, unless we have some accountability some way, there is no way of knowing. That person's going to walk away? You think they're going to walk up and say, "Can I have that back?" No, they're going to walk away from it. So enforcement really bothers me. I don't believe in creating laws just to create laws unless there's something that we can actually do about it. So we would have to, at the same time, consider some kind of forced registration within Canyon Lake to make sure that we know who has something that flies over or comes into the backyard or is violating. There was a question about the ability, the legal ability to actually regulate airspace, which is what I think is why there are no rules or laws through the FAA. I don't want us to be building something that is not, that is not going to be enforceable in court or enforceable in front of an officer of the law in some way. If that is, if that is also the question, that we don't even have the ability to regulate, then what will we do with that? And I think that has to be answered before we go forward, if we go forward. Like I said, I don't like it. If I was going to like any of them, it would be the Paradise, Arizona, comes the closest, Paradise Valley, sorry. But there are some, some things I don't like about that either. I agree that just like taking an RC car out or taking your kite or something else that you want to fly out into someplace beyond your backyard, this is a spur of the moment thing. This isn't something that they're going to say, "Next Saturday, I'm taking this out." So we aren't going to know anyway. So this is, this is a conundrum. I believe that before we go further with any of this, I think the first question we have to ask is, do we have the right to regulate and say that within four hundred feet or five hundred feet? Do we actually have that right to do that or does that have to change beyond our, beyond our ken?
Do you have an opinion, Madam Attorney?
I think you have some limited right to regulate for personal health, safety, and welfare. You have a, you may or may not have a preemption issue with the FAA registration. There is not a lot of law in this area. I think the ordinance is easier to write than it is to enforce.
It's just, if there's an ordinance... If there's an ordinance that we could write that would protect the city in case of two fifty-pound drones colliding and killing a couple of people, if we had an ordinance requiring a permit and they didn't have a permit, would that protect the city? I mean, you know, other, I mean, people sue for no reason at all, as we all know. And I'm just thinking in terms of protecting the city. I'm with Vicki on the Big Brother thing. I just think that we have to figure out what's going to protect the city and I don't know.
Let me suggest we put this on your next agenda, not necessarily March, you may have another meeting in February, and give you a better idea of what is out there. I mean, there's some ideas that occur to me, like simple nuisance. You could often do quite a bit with that, as opposed to looking at the law that was vetoed by the governor and seeing if it gives us any ideas, taking a look at Rancho Mirage and the other ordinances. Rancho Mirage only because it's a California ordinance. LA's is pretty complicated.
Yeah, Rancho Mirage is, basically says you can't do it if I remember correctly.
Right. But they've got to have some kind of enforcement mechanism.
If I may, does the sheriff's department have any thought on this issue? Putting you on the spot. Putting you on the spot.
In reference to controlling something to the effect of drones in airspace regulated by the FAA, there's nothing in state law that would put us in that position to enforce. One, secondly, there was some legislation for area specifics regarding law enforcement, fire. And we were area specific. So area specific for a parade, you know, that's something that's beyond our scope. But we were looking at anything with an active scene. We wanted those out. Fire, obviously, that was a big hot topic because there was a lot of drones in the area and some major fires where planes couldn't go through. So from our standpoint, we operate on state law. There's nothing in the books regarding that. And because of that, you know, I have no stake in the game or any comment on it. But there was movement, got vetoed, we're out of the game. So that's where we stand.
Any questions? The one thing where the state might have done some good and they ignored it as opposed to digging away from us. I, you know, I would just like to see this discussion continued at some point. There's obviously a problem. Nobody's figured out how to handle it. And I'd like to leave this on the table to for continued discussion in case there's, anybody comes up with any brainstorms on what might be the best solution to a problem that nobody's come up with. You know, we certainly can't have, in my opinion, you know, drones flying around with guns attached. You know, there's got to be some line someplace.
I believe there are some things developing in that manner, but we may have more information when we come back.
Okay, I'd just like to, you know, continue this. Put it in a couple of months, see if anybody has any additional brainstorms on the topic and.
You know, it's not like we don't have a whole ton of BLM land around us where they can go out and they can just really do their thing out there in the nowhere lands. But.
But not everybody has that.
Is there any comment from the?
Well, we're just worrying about our area.
Any comments from the audience? Certainly welcome your thoughts on this because I don't think anybody has an answer. Okay, hearing no. Well, the FAA has identified.
Restate the question.
Oh, yeah, to restate the question, can you limit the weight? Maybe, I don't know the answer to that. The FAA has identified that anything under, I believe it's 50 pounds, is a recreational drone. So, you know, if we're basing, you've essentially got to control those under 50-pound drones, so.
It should be under 20 pounds.
I would think so, but we're left holding.
Yeah.
Yep. Any other comments from the audience before we abandon this for a couple of months and hope that somebody gets a brainstorm on how to solve an unsolvable problem? Did you want to say something?
If you do, come up.
All I want to say is that.
On the microphone.
All I want to say is there are some drones. A lot of people and a lot of professional people have drones. A lot of my friends have some drones. They fly them over the dam, they take some pictures. Some are professional photographers, et cetera. And it may be good for the city council to talk to some of these people and maybe get some ideas. Because they may have some back history, they may keep up on the laws, they use them, you know, every day. So you may want to talk to them. I've seen the big drones, I've seen the 50-pound drones. I've seen them fly in our parks, et cetera. I mean, huge things, very, very expensive.
I think, and please, if I'm not speaking for the council, you know, all of us are unsure where to go with all of this, but think it needs to go someplace. And, you know, if there's, on your website or something, you get a discussion going. Maybe there'll be something that create, you know, some interest and some.
They could probably help out and they could probably direct you or answer your questions or things that maybe we don't know about.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
We need more input. It's a tough issue.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
Is anybody, anybody okay with that? Any other comments or questions, concerns? Want to pull out your hair? I guess not, okay. Moving on. So come back to us in a couple of months and ask us if we want to talk about it again. Next issue is a, there's been a request for a Attorney General's opinion regarding a procedure in the council. Do you want to comment on that or?
There is, there was a request and there is a staff report in the agenda packet. So we're ready for any discussion or direction to staff.
Okay. John, this was your request. If I, do you have anything you want to say about it?
I think we should get the Attorney General report. I can't see why we can't do what the county does, county organizations. You go to a county meeting, you fill out a form to speak. You go to WRCOG, you go to RTA, you go to RCTC, you fill out a form to speak. And to say that we can't do that when cities around us do it and the code, the Brown Act itself, says that you can have reasonable regulation. And that's, I don't think it's unreasonable. Part of the thing the Brown Act really wants to do is to make it a sunshine law. Let people be able to speak. You're able to speak, you just say that you want to speak. The other thing that the Brown Act does really want to have is an orderly meeting. Because it's conducting the business of the city. And to conduct the business of the city, you can ask for reasonable regulations. And I think that's reasonable. It takes a few months to get it and let's do it quickly. If it's necessary to go to a legislator, I would be more than happy to talk to Assemblywoman Melendez and ask her to make this request to the AG for us.
All right. It's in me, well, I'm going to jump in. You know, you can obviously make the request to Melendez on anything you want yourself. I guess the question is, is it in behalf of the council? And if I understand your issue correctly, check me if I'm wrong, is that you think people should say where they're from?
No, never said that.
What is it you'd like to have?
The retort to my request was that, from council, and I think it's totally inappropriate, that comment. What I had asked for is what we have. A form where you put your name down and what you want, and what item you want to speak on. That's it. What we have today, in the Brown Act, and I can read you the section on it, says that to attend a meeting, you cannot require people to sign their name and address as a requirement to attend the meeting. That has nothing to do with speaking. What we have today goes to the illegal aspect of saying, people just walk up to the lectern and give us your name and address. Well, that's not legal, so if people don't have to do it, we can't require it. But that's our resolution, that's our law. Our law doesn't make sense to what is applicable there. And just to ask people for their name and what item they want to speak on, I don't think is inappropriate to.
To clarify a little, our decorum rules contain a provision which was revised that says that speaker slip, I am summarizing, speaker slips are voluntary. That you cannot force a person to fill one out in order to speak.
Well, I don't recall that.
I would like to say that I personally favor more informal meetings. And, you know, regardless of whether we're allowed to do it or not, I would be, I enjoy trying to, you know, encourage dialogue. And anything that we can do to discourage dialogue, I guess I'm intuitively against. So, you know, having to have people fill out forms seems like a burden, or not a burden, but something that, you know, I wouldn't be a favor even if it were legal. Any other comments?
Well, I just have to speak from my experience on the board. On our Home Association meetings, people fill out a form and they state what their topic is going to be about. And those go to the president and he can sort those by things that are on the agenda or things that are not. Those things that are on the agenda, they're allowed to speak during the agenda discussion. Those who are not, they have to speak prior to everything starting. It makes for a more orderly, concurring meeting. It's easier for certainly the president to be able to know, you know, when to call on people and what their topic is going to be. Also, we had some pretty fiery issues on the board where we had maybe 50 people wanted to speak. And what we did was if there was 10 or 15 people that wanted to speak on a subject, we would ask them to get together, I mean, three minutes each, you know. We'd have been there till three in the morning. So we asked them to narrow it down to maybe two or three people that could speak for the whole bunch rather than listen to the same thing over and over and over again. I think it just, I don't, to me, I don't see a big deal about picking up piece of paper and writing your name on it and what you want to talk about. I mean, it's two sentences. I just think it leads to a more orderly meeting and clarifies things a little more and makes it a little more organized. And frankly, I don't see why it's a big deal. If somebody doesn't want to fill out a form, they can put up their hand and say, I'd like to speak. And, you know, we can't force them to it. Our decorum resolution says they may be requested, will not be required, but may be requested. We can request it if they don't want to do it, they don't have to do it. It's not, we're not going to put a gun to their heads. But it, to me, getting in the habit of doing that, I know for the Home Association, it was a much better way and more organized way to run the meeting.
I guess I'm not understanding the question then because, excuse me, if we are truly talking about government in the sunshine where we are going to be conducting these meetings, because honestly, guys, you're watching us conduct a meeting between us. And we welcome the questions and comments, but that's the only time we get to talk about these things. To limit somebody by saying, unless you fill one of these things out, you cannot speak, I think is contradictory to our mission. And I, so I agree with Tim on that, that the more participation and if somebody is shy about putting their name and address down or maybe they don't actually even live in the city, then they're not going to do that. So I'm not sure, John, if you are asking that we require that or that we just maintain the status quo or?
The presiding officer has every right to accept somebody from the floor. I have no problem with the presiding officer, whoever it may be, whether it's the mayor or whoever is presiding, to say that somebody says, I want to speak. He has that right to do that. But to have in our written decorum thing, you walk up to the podium and you stand in line and then give your name and address when that's.
Well, we don't have that requirement.
That's what we had.
No, oh, no, we've never had that. Actually, I always thought it was interesting at the POA meetings. You can tell the people who attend POA meetings consistently because as soon as they come up, they give their name and they're tracking lot number. And we don't care where you live. You can talk if you want. So we have never, as far as I know, we have never required that people come up to the podium and give their name and address. We ask that they fill out a slip to keep things orderly so that we can match them to the appropriate times.
Well, I think.
We do require that they come to the podium, but we do not require that they give their information. So, so again, I just have to go back to what is bringing this. I'm not sure what the end game is here. What is the end result?
The way I see this, and I'm sorry for interrupting, but I see we've got two issues. One, requesting an Attorney General's opinion whether it's legal. And two, the issue is whether we do it or not. You know, because we've got a decorum issue and then we've got an issue, can we legally do it? Personally, my reading of the law would say that it's questionable at best on whether we can legally do it. And, you know, do we want to go to the, you know, John can go to Melinda's office and request that she do it anyway, or do we as a council want to request it? I think it's kind of silly myself to, if we don't want to change the way we do things, to go through the process of making an Attorney General's request. If nothing else, just from the standpoint of, you know, there's legal fees that taxpayers will ultimately have to flip the bill for having go to the Attorney General. You know, somebody has to pay for Attorney General's opinion. But, you know, I, the way I'm looking at it is if we don't want to change the way things are done, it's no need to go to the Attorney General unless you just want it to be philosophically clear.
We do, we have the request forms sitting at the table.
Right.
And just about everybody fills them out. The only time somebody comes up is when there's a rebuttal or if we ask somebody if they would like to speak. They're not required to go out and fill out a form. They're coming to talk on the topic that is being discussed at the time. But it's very rare that anybody comes up the first time without submitting a slip. So I'm not sure what it is that we're trying to change.
Well, I would think that we're discussing two issues. One, do we request an Attorney General's opinion? And two, do we change the way we're doing things now?
To me, I think requesting an Attorney General's opinion on something that could be easily resolved among us, in fact, it seems like it really kind of has, is just a waste of our, paying our attorney to have to go do this whole thing. Frankly, I think it's, we could well spend our money better than on our attorney, no offense.
The AG's opinion is free.
Pardon me?
The AG's opinion is free.
Yeah, but your action to get there is not.
Well, generally, it is, there's a form that you fill out that is used by the Attorney General stating your question. And then the Attorney General will seek input from a variety of places, including the requesting place.
Which takes about a year.
Nine months, two years.
You have to fill out a form and, I mean, the whole thing just seems kind of silly.
There's not a lot of cost involved, in fairness.
Initially, when this came out back in November, when we did this, the city attorney said this could be done in a matter of weeks. We could have it by the next meeting.
No, that's not correct. And I need to clarify that because I think there's been some controversy. What I said was that I would email one of my friends who was a deputy AG and ask if he would provide an informal opinion, which he has done on one or two other occasions for me as an accommodation to clients. His response was that he could not do that here and that we should seek an opinion. And there was some delay in getting his response because he works part-time and is retired and was on a trip.
If I understand the way this process works though, you request an AG opinion, it goes to the AG, the AG farms it out to somebody who looks at it and, you know, basically gives them, him, an opinion that he can look at, you know?
The AG takes the question and there is a process that goes through to circulate it to various agencies. And then they have deputies, just like any big office. And there's people in the opinions unit who will research and write this opinion based on their past opinions and on some occasions, based on case law.
I take one exception to what you had said, which is, it doesn't cost anything. You know, as a taxpayer who pays state taxes, you know, it's costing somebody a lot for all these lawyers to be looking at, you know, there's a whole lot of legal opinions I'd like to have.
It does not cost the city money. Hard choice between the legislatures and lawyers, isn't it?
You got me there.
Well, I think if we go back to the why of all of this, I think like Don said, we've pretty much amongst ourselves figured out that this is not.
Something that we necessarily care to change. So if we don't care to change, I don't really care what the AG says.
I think I heard three voices that kind of went in that direction. So I guess the first, if, I'm going to revise this. Is there a motion to have the city, you know, again, you can request anything out of Melinda's office as you want. have the city, you know, again, you can request anything out of Melinda's office as you want, but is there a motion to have the city ask Melinda's office for, to request a AG opinion?
Can I make a comment?
Sure, sure.
It isn't my request to go to the AG. It was a statement from the city attorney that we would have to go to the AG because you can't get an opinion elsewhere. If the city council agrees to the fact that we need to change our decorum policy to require, by requiring, as we put it up there, you still have the ability to make the change, require people to fill out the form.
So, so let's take this the other way then, if it's acceptable with you. Do we have a motion to change the decorum policy?
I would make a motion to, to change the decorum policy for comments from the public, not necessarily public comments in the public comments section, but public comments from the people at any point in time, is that they fill out a form to indicate where they, what they want to speak on and submit it to the city clerk.
Okay. Do we have a second? Hearing no second, John. I think we're, we lose that one. With that said, is there a need to continue to, you know, do we, do we want the...
At this point, I have no idea what, what our decorum policy is on that because it was, you walk up to the podium and stand there and give your name and address. That's what it was.
We have slips in the back.
I'm saying our decorum policy.
It's, well, doesn't it say on here at present, the city council decorum resolution states that speaker slips will not be required although they may be requested. The speaker slips used note that the completion is voluntary. We put slips back there, they can fill them out or not fill them out.
I understand that. And I understand our, our procedure. I'm saying our policy. We have a written policy, we have written policies in here that we don't enforce. We made laws that we don't enforce.
Do we have a policy that goes against the city council decorum?
Plus, there is never, I have to, there's never been a time that we've ever demanded anybody to give their name and address up at this podium. I've never seen it.
No, no, we never have. But that was in our decorum policy. That's what I'm saying. We have a policy.
Well, present day, it clearly is not, so I...
I don't know that it's clearly not today.
Can we include in, just for informational purposes, the copy of the latest decorum policy so we can...
Send it out.
Yeah. Okay, send it out to us so that we can all take a look at it.
We can email it to all of the council members.
And if there's an issue that, you know, then we'll be clear on what we're talking about if we wanted to change that.
And if there's some, something that doesn't jive with the decorum and what John is talking about, could you research that and show us what that might be?
Our decorum policy in the past and the one that was just revised, we didn't revise the speaker section. It's always said that speaker cards are requested but not required.
I would like the, for all of us to get the original 90-22.
We can email...
Whatever we have today.
If you, if you want that to be, you know, discussed in the future, just request it be on the agenda and we'll continue the discussion once we all have the policy to take a look at.
Okay.
You're going to, the most two recent iterations of the policy are what you need. The original 90-22 could very well be different because it was done before the comprehensive Brown Act amendments in 1994. That simply would no longer be in effect.
Well, we need the light that...
Let me just, let me, that's absolutely correct. But what we did in November was to take that 90-22 that was done in 1990 and tried to bring it up to date. And that's when that came up and it said we had to do this. And then I was told that we can't require that. And it did say that you line up at the podium and you give your name and address. And as you know, you can't do that. And I had said at that point, we're requiring people by our policy to do things that are illegal. So, just give us the 90-22, that's the past one and whatever, because I have an iteration here and it, and it says under public comments, for additional comments or requests, we'll report back or give us after getting some additional information. So, I have no idea what the policy is today.
Excuse me, I don't remember us ever asking anybody to give their address when they step up to the podium. We've asked them to get, state their name so that we know what it is that they were talking about so that these ladies can record it properly, but we've not asked them to identify by address, tract or lot, just state your name and what you're speaking on.
Yes. And I guess I'm not making myself very clear at all. I'm saying that your resolution, your law says that's to happen. Did you do it? No. What I'm saying is we have a resolution, we have this decorum policy that we didn't follow. And so, make it to where it follows. You don't ask for it, don't have it in your resolution. It was in the, the one that we changed and I asked for it to be done differently.
Well, if it was changed and we're following it, what's...
I have no idea what it is because it was ended up that we'd have to go to the AG to do what I asked to be done. That's what the city attorney said. And I said, and you sat next to her, and I said, "Go to the AG." And you said, "Really?"
Okay, so if you get a copy of the resolution, you'll be happy?
No, it depends on what it says.
Okay. So, you still might have an issue with the resolution. So, at that point, if you have an issue with the resolution, we need to be clear on what that issue is. And if at that point, legal thinks that it needs legal clarification, then we'd be able to proceed that further. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's what I thought was the point. She said further AG. And I was just looking, what's the AG?
Well, okay. Okay, I think we need to know specifically what has changed that you object to so we can specifically know if there's something in our policy that you... Go ahead, Betsy. No?
I think we've beat this worse enough.
I believe, I believe he is making a statement that it is possible that in the past, under previous iterations, quite old iterations of 90-22, which was one of your first resolutions when you incorporated, that there could have been times when the language of 90-22 did not track with your practice. Both the city manager and I believe that between the comprehensive amendments in November and now, that any such discrepancy has been removed. And we went over it pretty quickly. However, we'll send it out and she, so that you guys can take a look. And we probably should begin to have that at every meeting. Because we do use it a lot.
I guess the other possibility is here, we just dismiss the issue with prejudice and don't come back to it. Is that something people want?
I mean, that would be fine with me because I like the way we do things now. How we ever get it past, I don't think it's...
Okay. So, is there, is there any motion for, John's made a motion.
It has failed by lack of second.
Yeah, for lack of second. So, is there, so is there any other motion that anyone wants to make on this topic?
I move that we dismiss this matter as fully discussed, asked, answered, rehashed, and let it go.
Beat to death.
Beat to death. That we do not bring it back in future meetings.
With amended to be more civil.
Okay, thank you.
The motion will be to not return to the agenda with this topic.
Is there a second?
I would like to see the...
I will send the current decorum policy out to all council members and we'll also have the deputy clerk put a hard copy in each agenda binder so you will have it present at each meeting.
Good.
Okay.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to dismiss this issue with prejudice. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. I believe that's four to one.
Four to one, motion carries.
Okay. That looks like the last piece of paper here. I do want to return us to executive session for just a few minutes once we get through with this session. So, now we'll move on to, yeah, council reports. Did anybody, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask people from the audience before we voted. And I apologize that I should have asked whether anybody from the audience wanted to address that topic. I didn't imagine you would, but, okay.
Do not have the little piece of paper, give me your address. Hold on, kidding.
Okay. Let's move on to, other than what you think, I do need to take a break for...
We knew, we thought you were going to do it before.
Yeah, yeah. So, let's take a five-minute break and we'll be back at 20 minute, nine, 20 minutes to nine to go through reports.
Okay. What's your... Oh, to overset this one.
I look thinner on camera now, you know.
We will return after this small interruption of... Welcome back, the three of you that are still watching us on television. Moving on to reports, is there staff reports to be made at this point in time? City manager report?
Just for the sake of the recording, because this will be replayed, the main gate project is moving ahead, we do have the encroachment permit and traffic plans, so the traffic flow's going to change at the intersection of the main gate and the shopping center in Railroad Canyon Road. Through traffic on Railroad Canyon Road will continue as normal, you can turn left into the gate or right into the gate, depending on which direction you're coming from. However, in the shopping center, the lane that leaves the shopping center and goes straight into the main gate will be for golf carts only, and traffic for cars or trucks from there will have to turn right or left out of that exit to the shopping center. And if somebody would like to go to the main gate and enter there from the shopping center, they're going to be directed to the traffic light that is closer to City Hall and the auto shop there, and then they can turn left at that intersection and then turn right into the gate. And most traffic, we're hoping, will go to use the east gate. I believe the POA has changed the way that the guard schedules will be, so they will have additional guards there to move people through. They are also going to change the way the issue passes at the main gate, from what I understand, to help move traffic along as best they can. There will always be at least one lane of traffic in and out of the main gate.
I have a real concern, I have visions of if you're... You have to go up and make a left, you know, to come out of the shopping center, you have to turn right and then make a U-turn at the signal here to get back to the main gate. If there's five or six cars that come out, they're going to be stacked up on Railroad Canyon.
She's saying you go out the west gate, you cannot go out the west signal.
Correct.
You have to go out the east, so you can't go down, make a U-turn, and come back.
Correct, you would have to go farther down, closer to where Black Horse is, to do a U-turn. You can't do a U-turn at the second shopping center.
But a car can't go out by Peppi's.
So if you come out of the shopping center...
By the main gate.
You have to turn right or left.
Correct.
I thought you can't go out...
No, you have to go down to Auto Care USA, that entrance, go out that...
Then come out.
And my point being, if you want to, if you're coming out and you want to go in the main gate, and you have to turn right, and then turn at the signal here by the City Hall, and go back to the main gate, if you've got three or four cars stacked up in that lane, it seems to me, that's why I asked you, if a traffic engineer designed this, because it seemed to me like it'd be very dangerous.
Are you talking about backing up in the shopping center?
No, backing up on Railroad Canyon.
She's going out...
Oh, I'm sorry, no, if you're a car and you want to go in the main gate, you have to come in the parking lot around past City Hall to that east, and then you turn left and turn...
So they're going to have it cordoned off, so you cannot, I mean, because...
She's worried about stacking on Railroad Canyon Road.
In like the right turn lane on Railroad Canyon Road?
On the west signal is what she's concerned about.
So they're going to have it blocked, so you cannot come out, turn right, if you're a car. You have to go down and come out at the signal.
Only people who are at the shopping center?
Yes.
If you go to the shopping center, you've got to go out by Auto Care.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yeah, if you're coming, you know, if you're heading east, you can make a left turn, if you're heading west, you can make a right turn.
You can make a right, okay, I'm sorry.
The only issue would be if you come to the shopping center, how are you going to get back in?
But anyways, okay, if I'm coming up Railroad Canyon and I want to go in the main gate, I have to come to the signal by Auto Care?
No, 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 if you're on Railroad Canyon...
I can't turn left.
You can get in the left turn lane and go in. It's only if you're leaving the shopping center that there's a lane change.
And that was even, I just had a brief discussion, just to add to that with Chris, and he had some concerns, and I said, well, you know, if it turns out it's not working, we can always, you know...
Fix it.
Fix it, yeah.
Pedestrians and golf carts can go out the west, just, that's west, this is east. Go across from the west signal into the gate, golf carts and pedestrians can cross the street there, but cars are not allowed to go out that exit.
Correct.
They've got to go over by Auto Care, so that you have just one...
Golf carts can't go out that, because then they'd be on the road.
Right.
Correct. And that's it. Happy birthday, Councilmember Zeitz, happy Valentine's Day, and that's all.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Is it Valentine's Day?
It's over now.
It's not Valentine's Day.
You got me scared.
Can't you read?
That was your Valentine present?
I don't remember, it could be Groundhog's Day for all I know.
That was yesterday. Or Monday.
Who's on first?
Yeah, what's on? Okay, no other comments, okay? Moving on to committee and council reports, Councilmember Aaron Krantz?
Yes. I'm not going to go into all the several meetings that I've attended this past month, because I think it's a little more important, since for those of you who don't know, and you probably do, I'm president of Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District, and I think it behooves me to be a little serious, perhaps, about my...
I'm sorry.
Obligation. I have some stuff for you that you can read later, on bedbugs, but this is in regards to the Zika, and I'm not going to read all of this, because hopefully the people at home are still listening, but if not, I have quite a bit of information here that can be obtained at the city council, at the city office. I'll just read something from our district manager, which says, "Recently, Zika virus has been heavily reported in the local and national news. Attached is information on the virus and measures which can be taken to protect yourself and your family and your community. At this time, there are 31 cases of Zika virus in the U.S., but none of these cases were locally acquired. They are all imported cases from Latin America and the Caribbean. There are no cases in Riverside County. The mosquito that transmits the virus has recently been found, excuse me, in a small area of our county. The district is fully aware of this virus and has already taken steps to protect its residents." Now, they're going to be doing, this is a notice of intent to apply public health pesticides for vector control purposes to surface waters and waters of the U.S. within Western Riverside County. The Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District intends to make public health pesticide applications to over and adjacent to constructed conveyances, surface waters, and other waters of the U.S. owned and controlled by an entity other than the district for vector control purposes. General NPD has permits for biological and residual pesticide discharges for vector control applications." Does that mean stop?
No, that means I messed up the hammer.
Thank you. "The district's activities are conducted year-round within a 300-square-mile area situated in the western portion of the county of Riverside. The area that will actually be, or potentially impacted by, the district's activities include the following incorporated cities of Calamasa, Canyon Lake, Corona, Lake Elsinore, Eastville, Arupa Valley, and Riverside." I won't read all of this information, just before I got here, or before I came here, excuse me, I didn't have time to print it, because I was on my way out the door, so I've got this from our local office. It says, "Jordan, you can simply report that Florida declared a public health emergency even if the Zika virus was not transmitted by local mosquitoes. These were all imported cases." It says, "Florida governor declares state of emergency in counties with Zika." It's probably too complicated to understand, and also I have a little trouble pronouncing some of the names of these mosquitoes. But all this information is here, I have several pages, I don't want to take the time to read all of it, and hopefully somebody is listening. I have this for our mayor, because I know he needs some of this information. I'm not going to read it.
I know him.
As I say, I attended all the meetings that I am responsible for attending, and I would just like to, I know that there's not another chance for comment, so I'd like to make one comment, and I guess it's sort of a plug. We have a new restaurant here in Canyon Lake, I was invited to the soft opening on Sunday, and it's called Fat and Happy, and boy, was I...
Where is it?
Where Jimmy's Cafe was.
Jimmy's is gone?
These hamburgers, they only had a limited menu on Sunday, and they were about five feet tall, these hamburgers, yeah, you needed a step ladder to eat them. But anyhow, this is a plug for these people, I wish them well, and hopefully that everybody will participate in there, also, I think they're going to have an opening next week. And thank you for that, and that's the end of our report.
Just one augment, one little plug, the market's going to have breakfast burritos too, beginning tomorrow.
Hey, great, we're going to have a lot of places to eat, but Fat and Happy, I was. Thank you. And this place will be open for breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
And they're working on a wine and beer license.
Right. Thank you.
I don't have a lot, a lot of the meetings were postponed until they're, some of them are every other month, and some are coming up. I did attend the water committee meeting, and our dam is, if not overflowing now, it will be soon, with any other runoff from last week. It does not get regulated, they don't let water out just to keep that from happening, we just let it happen. And that's really all I have, we don't have another veterans committee until coming up, I think it's April, and I have no other meetings. I attended the ones I was supposed to attend, and nothing exciting to report, no bedbugs.
All right, let me give you the picture, just so you can look and make sure. Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Zeitz?
I attended the meetings that I was supposed to attend, and nothing else, other than happy Valentine's Day. I'm done.
Happy birthday, John, too.
Thank you.
You're so ahead of yourself.
That's coming up in the next couple months, isn't it, Valentine's Day?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Hagerty?
Okay, the safety committee meeting, I'm just going to, I'm not going to read all the stats, just give you a couple of quick things. The maximum response for our calls from the fire department are 10 minutes or less, which is acceptable by the state, and we're, so we're okay with that. The police department report, we had one rape this month, which he could not talk about, because they're investigating it, but he said he wanted to assure the public that there was no danger involved. A lot of, several domestic violence, one car theft, and a number of cars being broken into and things taken. For the life of me, I don't understand why people leave their cars open, because I've watched, I watched a man one night, just, I came in late, I was trying to unlock my door, and I saw this guy walking by, and he was pulling the handle on every car parked on the street to see if one was open. They do that, so you have to lock your cars. So, and they still need volunteers for, always, for emergency preparedness. But animal control, we got a really good report this month on that, and everything's under control. As far as Riverside County transportation, we had a two-day meeting, and they brought a fellow in from DC who is a specialist in all this stuff, technology stuff, that spoke to us, and it was fascinating. It's almost scary what's going to happen in the very near future, and because of that, the highways being built now have to plan for that. For example, they're looking to build a new highway, and the striping on it has to be different, because the new automatic cars that are going to be driving will, that, those stripes will control them in certain ways. In the future, he described no signals, no stop signs, there won't be traffic jams, because all the cars will be controlled in a manner where there just won't be those issues, so we're talking the Jetsons here. It's, yeah, it's, I mean, but it's a reality. He was talking about some of the technology, it was way over my head, but it was really, really interesting. Also, I think transportation is really concentrating on getting goods moved from Coachella Valley and from the port, and most of those goods go through Riverside County, so they're hoping to get more funds from the federal government to do this. Coachella Valley has 120 products grown there, and 1.4 billion gross value, which is amazing. He talked about obviously needing more truck lanes, if you've been over the, going to Vegas, you know that it's a horrible mess there, because they're adding a truck lane. Once that's done, it will ease traffic flow, because the trucks, slow trucks, they won't be in their own little lane. I also have just begun conversations with some people who should have concern about our Corona-Temecula corridor. We do not have a through road from Corona to Temecula, in case the 15 was blocked off, or we had an earthquake and part of it collapsed, or whatever. There are sections where people simply couldn't get off and continue on. They would have to take a very circuitous route, some weird way that, I mean, it would be very complicated for them to get back to where they wanted to go. And that's a concern of mine, and I think that since it takes 100 years to get anything done, you have to talk to the cities, who then have to discuss allocating land, and then they go to RCTC, and they have to look at the funding, and they put it in the queue, and all this takes about 10 years. So I figured it was a good idea to get started now with that conversation. And I have a meeting with Kevin Jeffries next week, and then I'll be meeting with the cities that are involved, and trying to get some cooperation to move forward with at least developing a plan, which I personally think is kind of important, that we'd be able to get people off a freeway in case of a blockage, and them to be able to continue on safely to where they want to go. So that's my latest little thing, and that's my report.
Okay. My report, first of all, the planning committee, I'm going to augment that with the statement that we have, our new service providers onboard who are, so we have one agency that's responsible for planning, building inspection, engineering. With one agency, I think that'll, hopefully, will make a very smooth, the process around here smoother. I'm pleased to report that we had some, we had them working this last weekend on the main gate issue and how the traffic would flow, and I, as I understand it, they worked hard and did a good job for us to make sure that was all coordinated, so that there were no unneeded delays in the process of getting the new gate going. Regional Conservation Authority, I actually made an accomplishment, which I'm kind of proud of, forced them to actually come up with a policy, or one of the factors that forced them to come up with a policy on... Forced them to actually come up with a policy, or one of the factors that forced them to come up with a policy on fee waivers. Up until now, it's, it's been the case that individual cities granted their own fee waivers, you know, this piece of property in exchange for this amount of land, blah, blah, blah. And so at least now there's a centralized policy on how that works. And so fee waivers are not that cannot be abused, so I'm, I'm happy to see that occur. My next attack there is on their policy on land usage. There's no consistent policy on what they do with their lands, or how they determine what they do with their lands, it seems to be fairly arbitrary. So I'd like to see them get some policies there, so after four years, maybe I'm making a little bit of difference in that, that agency. League of California Cities, I'm on the the alternate for the board, the executive board, and one thing that came up in discussion that I find disturbing, well, I find it disturbing that I got to pay $65 for my oil change starting to the immediate future. That one just went through. Well, people, please vote for somebody with some sense up in Sacramento. Editorial comment ended. Anyway, the, one thing that has been proposed is the by the league is the state, or actually by the league too, but the, the state has proposed that they take over water rates. And I, and for some reason, the the league, the League of California Cities had gotten on board with this, because they thought there was some benefit, financial benefit for the cities. And I think it was clear after our discussions that at least Riverside County does not agree that that should be a state responsibility, regardless of the benefits to the cities. You know, it's a, it's an attack on local control, which is what I think the League of Cities is there to prevent. So hopefully they change their tune on this, and will not be supporting that that legislation that would take those water rates away from local authorities and place them in the hands of state legislators. I had a number of other meetings, went to the POA meeting the other night, where they did a very nice presentation on on traffic flow and what was going to happen there. Actually, a fairly civilized meeting, it was nice to watch. I guess with that, I'll leave my, leave end my comments. Oh, I did make a pitch for Toastmasters at the POA meeting too, so let's continue to, to get that rolling. Next city council meeting is, somebody have a date for me? March 2nd? With that, I believe we're going to adjourn to executive session, and, okay, hold on.
We'll adjourn and go into closed session. And then when we adjourn the meeting, we would like to continue that to Friday at 1:30 PM to continue the closed session items.
Closed session.
To continue closed session item B pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, Public Employment City Manager.
Without objection? Okay, so that will be continued. And I, we will not, I, we will have nothing to report, I think I can say that in advance, can't I? Yes. Okay, we'll have nothing to report, so with that, I'll adjourn, adjourn the meeting to closed executive session. Good night, y'all.